All right, Mr. Orger. Can Sheila hear us okay?
Yeah, she sound checked. Good. Long as we're using our microphones anyway. Uh, good evening, everybody. First thing I have for you tonight, if you're consideration, is a copy of which is in your packets, is Plaski County Ordinance 2023-05. Our attorney has reviewed it and okayed it as written. Um, as you all know, for some time now, the CDC and I have been working on a comprehensive overhaul of the community development operations for the county. CDC, when it was established, was set up entirely under county resolution, not tied to any of the sections of the Indiana Code that address statutory commissions and the tools to which they have access. We've also been amended over the years so that our board is up to 15 people, which can be unwieldy, and half of them are at-large members. And so what I'm asking you tonight to do in adopting this ordinance is to take the first step in that overhaul. The ordinance, which the Indiana Code requires the council to adopt, establishes the Plaski County Economic Development Commission and the Department of Economic Development, with most of the provisions of the ordinance to be effective on the first of October. For the code, the Board of Commissioners have the responsibility for appointing the three members of the EDC, but it is the council's right to make one of the nominations for those three seats. Our plan is to solicit applicants to serve on this and the other entities that I'll be asking the commissioners to establish or reactivate between now and October, so two and a half months, give or take, of reviewing applications, finding the right people, bringing them to the council and commissioners, so that all their terms would begin on the first of October. One provision in this ordinance would not go into effect until the first of January, and that is the section that appoints the president of the EDC to the CDC. Or restructuring of the CDC, we're going to hold off till the first of the year on that. So there's a three-month onboarding period where the presidents of the Redevelopment Commission, Economic Development Commission, et cetera, have time to get comfortable, kind of get caught up to speed on what the CDC has going on, so that they're not thrown into two roles at once. Pursuant to this ordinance, there would not actually be any staff on the payroll of the Department of Economic Development. CDC staff would serve in that function until such time as an increase in workload might require a revisiting that language, that structure. In addition to the statutorily assigned responsibilities, which mainly focus on certain area declarations and bond issuance for economic development projects, pursuant to this ordinance, the EDC would be responsible for reviewing and making recommendations to the council regarding requests for economic revitalization areas and tax abatements. You know, currently, I'm the one responsible for walking the business through the process and then, in most cases, bringing that recommendation to you on my own. In this case, I would walk them through the process. The three-member EDC would actually review their request and either recommend it favorably, unfavorably, or neutrally, possibly with a score to attach to it if we decided we wanted to establish some criteria, as some units do, as the assessor and I have suggested in the past, but not made progress on. So they would do the things that we probably won't see for a while with bonds, like with this housing project we're discussing, other things like that. They would be responsible for the reviewing tax abatement request before they come to the council. Um, I'm going to ask the commissioners next week to adopt a resolution that assigns them a similar review and recommendation responsibility for the revolving loan fund, once that's reactivated. Since the CDC's structure is going to be overhauled drastically and its responsibilities are going to go from catch-all to primarily focusing on day-to-day supervision, so that we don't, like, have our staff directly accountable to seven different bodies, thought it would be appropriate to take that out of that body's hands and add that to the Economic Development Commission. So we'll be asking commissioners to do that next week. Um, and that part would go into effect in the first of the year, again, once they've had the opportunity to kind of onboard, get to know the revolving loan fund program, that sort of thing. Uh, so unless any of you have any questions first, I would ask that you pass Ordinance 2305 so that we can begin this process of restructuring the CDC and opening ourselves up to development tools that we currently cannot access.
I do have a question, but before I do that, I would just want to remind everybody, and uh, thanks Sheila for being with us remotely. But please, everybody, make sure you use your microphones, because I know when I did this remotely, it was very difficult to hear people. So, sure, she would appreciate it, and I would. My question to you, Nathan, is, uh, I just want to make sure, and I know you've gone over this with your board and all, we've talked, but just, you know, just get a public answer. The board is 100% behind this, agrees with this direction, and...
Yep. Hey, I've got board members who for years have been pushing me to do something to streamline operations. Because, like I said, it's just unwieldy. The number of times in the last, especially post-pandemic, that we haven't been able to get a quorum. And that actually led to the point where we went to the commissioners and said, "Can we just not fill vacancies as people turn out?" So if this doesn't all go through, and the first of the year, we're still under the current structure, uh, we'll have to revisit some of that. Right now, we're not adding, filling vacancies, because it's become so hard to get enough people to show up at meetings. So we're actually going to end up with more members of the community serving on these boards, but they're going to be divided into like a five-person board, a seven-person board, a seven-person board, and then a seven-person board made up of representatives of all of those, instead of 15 people all needing to come to the same meeting. Thank you.
Or any other questions for Orger?
It's been, it has been discussed at joint sessions. Uh, I don't know that we've dived into it in depth this year as much as we did last year, but it's gone through the council and commissioners of several meetings to... Are there any particular questions that you've got? Most counties, let me answer. Very few counties do what we do. Many counties, like my office, the business that, the organization that is theoretically in charge of, especially attracting businesses, has a broad-based membership with business representatives, typically exist as a standalone nonprofit that contracts with the county for a certain annual fee, might be with the towns as well, and then also has businesses paying to play. Then, a number of counties also have these separately doing this sort of admin side. So Cass County has a redevelopment commission and an economic development commission. Stark County does not have any at the county level, but Knox and North Judson both have redevelopment commissions. El Pereso is very similar to what we're proposing here. They have one director and staff serving both the redevelopment commission and economic development. There are just a lot of tools the Indiana Code affords to these commissions that we don't have access to. This housing project we have been discussing, one of the anticipated sources of funding in the capital stack is tax increment financing. Cannot do that without a redevelopment commission. It's difficult to do bonds to fund, if you were building an industrial park today, or if we wanted to use bond funding for the housing project, without the Economic Development Commission in place to be the actual entity that goes through the bonding process. Not every community does the, what we're doing, very few counties, if any, do what we currently do, where I have this hybrid structure, and I'm a county employee, but I have a board that I actually report to, and we don't have any tools to use that the state allows. The only tool we really have are tax abatements and the revolving loan. It doesn't, at least for now. If everything gets approved as proposed, I will still report to the Community Development Commission. It will just be a smaller board, and it won't have like the at-large. I won't go finding people in the business community that I think would be good to have on it. It will all be the people appointed from these individual boards. It would just be that, instead of going to the 10 of you and saying, "Hey, this is our marketing plan for tourism for 2024. What do you, the guy who used to run the transfer station, and you, the manufacturing director of operations, and you, the farmer, think the best way of spending this money is?" We'll go like, "What do you, the person who owns a bed and breakfast, think the best way of spending this money is? What do you, the person who has a canoe and kayak livery on the river, think is best? What do you, who manages a state park, think is best?" And so we'll be able, more so with the tourism than the others, just because of the nature of the industry, be able to make sure that the people who are offering policy guidance for our office are the people who are in the know.
Well, just to kind of answer, I did look quickly here, and as for how in-depth of conversations we've had on it, I can't, that's why I say all for recollection, but it has been part of the agenda on at least two separate occasions, considering tonight as well, just the last six months. I know Sheila sat on the board and all, she might have some input in as well.
Hi, we've been working to do this for a while on our economic development board. I would hope that we can move forward with what Nathan's suggesting.
You have some other questions for them, Brad?
I think, uh, you know, I know we've been talking about this, but I don't know what the answer is. A lot of stuff here. I think we looked this over here.
Yes.
I don't know. I don't know what. Can we vote, next meeting, or is it?
I mean, yeah, you can. The only thing that's going to do is going to limit the time I've got to, for us to go and recruit people to serve on it, but it's not the end of the world. It just complicates my appointment with the commissioners next week a little bit, because I can't ask them to assign the revolving loan fund responsibilities to another entity that hasn't been established. It's doable, it'll just make the time a little bit more of a time crunch.
I'd be comfortable next meeting, or then? That's just me. Can we table it till the next meeting? Is that okay with you?
Make a motion to table it, and we'll table it.
I'll make a motion to table it till next meeting, but definitely make the decision next meeting.
We have a second on that motion? All right, we have a motion and a second to table Ordinance Number 2023-05 till our August meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those? Passes.
Or do you want me to keep this ordinance number or to adjust and come back and reassign one to this next? Um, do you want to go into my additional request now or wait till you get to the later part of the meeting?
Yeah, we'll just wait. Down there, if that's all right?
Yeah.
Yeah. The Health Department, Coleman?
Slenda's going to join me.
Sure, it's borders farewell tour. Maybe we can get their microphone system or something?
Yeah.
About now, a little better. Slenda, Brian is here to join me, thank you. I believe we have two things. First is to transfer some monies by equipment. We have hard drives on the desktops. Quite old, embarrassed. Like to replace those. Kevin Goffey. Like to... Kind of need some other office furniture here. Sometime in next year, we're going to have, probably, considering a part-time person help get our overhaul, overhauling of the changes as we plan for next year. Got a lot of people working, filing to do that. So, long story short, with respect to... Modern desk. Transfer.
We can go ahead, and we'll do the transfers additional time after.
Thank you. And secondly, so Edwina Goffey, like I said, has started, she started the fifth. I take care of Hanson's place. Environmental specialist, she's a deputy, um, investigation, environmental. So she's currently the food inspector. Learning is that, um, to learn both those jobs is quite a big task. We're still on that track, ever due. Has more experience in foods, having, you know, jail cooking, charging kitchen. Got that experience, but environmental is quite a learning curve. That's going to take six, twelve, 24 months to learn. But currently, her job description, environmental health specialist, food inspector. There's some confusion. Terry was the office manager. This time, I don't think the new person should be the office manager. So Terry, where that cap could at the current time.
There any questions for Dr. Allman?
What do you, what's unclear?
Well, are you hiring this person and putting them in this slot? Are you? Because if it is, and they're... Putting up this person. Different ways. I'm a little lost over you.
Well, just tell me where I need to go then. I've said it, I've said it about, you know, at this time, she's only wearing two hats. I'm wearing the third hat, I'm the office manager. They're a day and a half a week now. Hospital's kind enough to let me invest that kind of time. So, uh, so it's just a person, like I said, if you, so formally, I guess maybe that's the question. Formally, this person is not the manager. So I guess I'm asking if that's something the council would approve, if there's two hats. That, that word is?
Designated. Approved. Designated.
Great.
All of them, seven scales that... Yes. That...
Well...
Us are replaced.
Well, in six months, we're going to change again. So I guess I've been looking towards that. Yeah. Okay, this is less than Terry's salary. And I'm not going to hire anybody else for that, for a hat. Did I just call her the office manager then? I mean, serious. But maybe I should just tell her she's, I'm serious, if that's simpler. That's what, better. Know her, she's very understanding.
It's established, so it is simple. But that doesn't necessarily... Done. Obviously... Other job. However, going up to that, eventually... In this...
Yeah, and there is a certain, certain rules and certain ways that positions are supposed to be established and set salaries and set wages for them positions. If this per, I mean, I guess my thought is, is if the person is not going to be taking over all the responsibilities, then that would be a quote-unquote "new position", that would have a new wage established to it. Then, I guess we decide whether we're going to make another position and establish a wage, which that would be an added position to the county and all, because we wouldn't be taking, so that would be increasing, increasing the cost for that department. If this person is just, let's say, in a training matrix, and they're going to be taking over the full responsibilities of the office at some point in time, then I wouldn't see where it's a new position, it's just a position that's being hired in, and this person's being trained, whether they're being trained by you or Slenda or whoever, I guess that's, to me, that's a moot point, as long as it's, the expectations are the same for that.
And I think one thing to keep in mind is that the commissioners recently adopted the opt-in resolution for state funding, so going into next year, there will presumably be... There is almost inevitably going to be more positions in that office going forward with the state funding. If Edwina isn't going to be doing the office management now, and we don't know if she will, if they, because they may want somebody who has more grant writing or financial skills to get atop of that side of it. What might make sense in the interim, since the way that department is structured, it doesn't really happen, is if you made this environmental health specialist, even if the title isn't that, the same matrix equivalent as a first deputy in a courthouse office, and then just transferred those funds, and then that pay comes in at a lower rate than where Terry was, but it still ends up being an hourly increase compared to where Edwina was as... So she's getting less annual pay, because that's a 40-hour position, but more hourly pay, because this is a 35-hour position. Um, and then you're actually tagging her more or less where she would be based on the wage study results too, as you and I had discussed.
Right, yeah, sweet. And that's kind of where I was trying to get what their idea of the job position was. As, uh, as me and Nathan had discussed, we even looked at it as how it fell into the, uh, you know, using the regional average and so forth that we've been using for kind of looking at where we place in wages and stuff. And it actually fell, the first deputy wage fell pretty cool, right into that number. So that would be the other, would be the other option is, would be a new position, hold it at a new wage, and then... The only thing is, is then to fill the second position, that would mean hiring at some point in time, if that position needs to be filled, we'd be hiring somebody with, new hire for the county. Only downside that I see to play to that is the simple fact that, you know, we're right now trying to figure out how to struggle, folks' pay raise, and... Yeah, I understand that, but, you know, everybody sitting on this board needs to understand as well, though, that not everybody sitting on that side of the table is going to see it the same way.
Well, I don't understand is, I mean, I just sit here and listen, and it sounds like Dr. Allman's just going to do this for six months and help her out, because more or less training, then he's going to do the office man, everything. So it's just like a temporary deal.
How about now?
There you go.
Okay, um, yes, issue, question. He has management experience, so, uh, I wouldn't be surprised he grows into that role.
I wouldn't either.
Yeah. Next year, you know, we're going to hire another person, the governor's funny, and likely that person will be a nurse. Now, whether they're a manager or not, I don't really, can't tell, find that person. But there's going to be a lot of changes, as I know, as we reorganize, change our focus to prevention. Majority of our money, 60% will be prevention, 40% will be making sure people follow the rules, like septic and foods.
So, to me, it seems like she would get, we just revisited after six months. I don't know how much you think that's worth or whatever, it's not my decision.
Yeah. That's not what she and I have said, but I, as, talking about, these positions are going to be fluid next three years. They've asked us to build capacity to get, and that means getting the right people that can, you know, handle the new jobs, new responsibilities, yet to be determined. That's the program I'm building right now with the state for 2024. Then, when they increase it in for 2025, we're going to find more things to do. Prevention especially. Trying to reduce the rates of illness and death, trauma. A lot we don't know. They've asked me to get the right people, that's their focus.
How can we, hey...
Basically, putting it up for six months. Yeah. I don't understand why you wouldn't want to fly her into Terry's position.
I do.
Yeah, I mean, I think... Think she's going to earn it, just because of the learning, technical soils. And she's, that's going to be difficult, I think that's going to be a difficult task for her, but I want to keep her, I don't want her to leave. Other counties have had that problem.
All Dr. Allman has to do is say that he wants to pay her out of Terry's pay. And then you're good, and then, I think, Dr. Allman, what I would do, like, from what all the discussion I'm hearing, is, you know, I'd really get ahead of the game and try to get some of these people that you want lined up. I think there's going to be some balking in this part, up just then, I feel the same way, is, you know, the state's real good about sending all this money to us, and then all of a sudden, saying it's gone, you know, we're not going to give you more money, and then you've looked it up, you know, fired six positions, and we ain't got a way to pay it. So I, you know, I'm not speaking for everybody, but that's how I feel. And so I'd really get ahead... And so I, I, I'd really get ahead of the game on, on new positions as far as, you know, where that money's coming from, how long we're going to have it. And then we might not have as much people standing back. I, uh, I, I think Laura was just confused when from the email she sent out earlier about, you know, when you were calling Edwina, environmental specialist, and you say add new position and we're not. So, you know, you can, for her, you really need to tell her where the money's coming from. And then I don't think she would have said a word. If you would have said, hey, I want to put her in Terry's spot and pay her out of there. But it kind of sounds like you're asking for a new position when you're, when you're named. So I would say, you know, I'm going to pay her out of Terry's spot. This is what she's going to do. I, I don't think that's what we're involved in too much is what she's going to do as long as, you know, you've got to have money. And then, now, when you want to, all of a sudden, then you come this, in December and say, I'm going to hire an office manager and this guy is going to be this over here, and we've got another position. This group's going to be settled. Believe me, we don't have the money for that, right?
Right.
So, uh, you know, I, I don't have any problem with, I think, what Dr. Phil and I think he's just not used to dealing with, can we go a little, we gather where all the money's coming from, so. Uh, you know, I, I, I understand, I think what you're doing is Edwina's probably going to get that spot, but you don't know. You gotta wait six months to see if she would go with him. And then, you know, like I said, if that's not what you're doing, if you're, you're just putting her there and tell all the money that Nathan's talking about, you know, I, I'd start coming up with a plan now for this to look at. All right, I'm going to have this much money and, you know, that's from the state. I've got it for three years. I'm going to hire this person. I think you're going to make your decision all the other, you know, if you want to trust the state, then all of a sudden they're going to say that more money. This seven's trying to decide where we keep seven people that we didn't have, if we're worried we don't have any extra money. That's that. I think that's why everybody's kind of saying else, uh, Dr. But not the name, they didn't want their health department. It's just, you know, we got to know where that money's coming from, how long the state's going to give. And I, and they're pretty bad about. I, I think the county's saying, you know, if it's three years worth of money, hire all these people, and then at the end of the three years, money's gone, when this group's sitting here, where do we come up with that extra money?
Yeah. But I think the, the way the law is written, you're protected from feeling that obligation. To pay somebody after, say there's a tremendous economic downturn and they decide to turn it off, I don't think you're going to be obligated. The state appropriation. But, but yes, if I, to, to follow your lead, I think if that's the simplest way, I, that's what I would request, that you still wear those three hats. I've already cut her back. Terry.
Yeah, but you.
I can't do that. Okay. Tell me what to do.
Aegis.
Okay.
Aye, out of that. So you got this position at a set wage and established. That's what.
Okay.
A different, different way.
Okay.
I thi- I think there's, yeah, there's, there's, there's two questions that need to be answered, I guess. Either A, is she going to be fulfilling the same expectations and job duties as Terry Hanson was in her position? If not, if that's not the expectation, her expectation is, is that there's going to be, we're going to create a new position and it's only going to be this workload and this is what that position is, then we have to, the board here creates a position, we establish a salary for it, and that's what you work off of to her to pay her.
Okay.
And, and then the question is, is okay, the rest of the role, if you're going to do B, then is your plan, and when is your plan, and what is the plan to establish a office manager's job? And what's expectations there? Because that's, that for me is where the stickler will become more because like I said, right now, we're struggling trying to help everybody in the county. And at this point in time, we've passed the resolution to go with the, the, the set forth path with the state funding and so forth, but that hasn't happened yet and that, that's not started. So we can't start promising jobs out there that we're not, uh, you know, that we're, we're not actually participating in.
Okay, um, sounds like she should be as the, uh, environmental specialist, she should be the food inspector and be the office manager. And you'll be learning all three of those roles. And then as far as what her pay should be, sounds like you're going to tell me what her pay should be.
Yep.
That's fine.
Yep. That position's established. We know where she falls in on the matrix with her longevity and that's what we'll move forward with.
It will. No, we've said the same thing in just a different way. We've all talked about this at the health department. She's heard these conversations. January 1st.
First.
And you'll get all the money, they said, in about four to six weeks, the whole year. They asked us, and also just a, just a reminder, they asked us to build a little slack into account for inflation because the figures are going to stay the same for, you know, they, they've set the, the scale for three years.
That's a good point.
So don't spend it all. We don't have to spend it all every year.
I would.
That's included in that budget. Yes. You see another, another position. And that was for the nurse. You know, I, I'm expecting a nurse, that person to take that. But, uh, and Laura, what, I, I have to come up with the budget, uh, and the program for the state by August 31st. It'll be the same, same numbers and obviously it may be more, it'll be a different detail than your budget. Different template.
Any other questions for Dr. Almond? All right, I think you have your answer. As long as you guys feel comfortable, we're good.
So Lori, you'll give me that figure, I hope, maybe week. Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to, uh, transfers, additionals. We have a, the health department transfer for $9,000, $9,800 from contracted services and $320 from computer software and hardware to patient care services. Need a motion and approval on that.
Make a motion to approve the transfer for the health department as presented.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion, a second. Do you approve the health department's transfer as presented? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. All right, we have an additional from C, or, excuse, yeah, an additional that needs advertised from CDC for $200,000 for, for professional services. Let Mr. Order.
All this is, is extra money towards the courthouse project because the process has not gone as quickly as we expected early in the year. So it's more that will either be reimbursed by the bond or not expended without the council's express approval to do it on something. Um, it's just that if you look in your packet, I've printed out the register of my line item that's funding this. And pretty much between the courthouse project costs themselves, uh, several legal bills that my office has been covering for the county, and then the, uh, Baker Tilly cash flow analysis invoice, which may end up getting rolled into the bond, I don't know yet. Uh, but that has just completely obliterated that additional appropriation. So based on where the architects, the bond council, financial advisors and the contractors all say we are going to get that bond issued finally, this will cover us. And then like I said, whatever isn't spent won't get spent, but the rest of it will all be reimbursed. None of this will be for general office expenses. If you look through that, you'll see there have only been six invoices I've paid all year that are general operating expenses for my offices. It's all been courthouse, the last couple of invoices for the architects for the work release project that we put on ice, two, um, Baker Tilly invoices for Bottle Brush Economic Impact Study and Tax Impact Study, which Bottle Brush is in one case has reimbursed and the second case is in the process of reimbursing. We've just incurred more courthouse costs pre-bond issuance than we expected back in February. Timeline. I mean, it, it's, you approve it or we run out of money and we start getting calls from architects who stop doing work until we pay the bill.
Any questions for Burger on this?
Don't we know how much the architects are going to charge? And if this, it takes longer, it's like.
We do, but we don't know when, like, X percentage of the job is going to be done relative to when the bond is issued. Because they continue getting paid after bond issuance, depending on how much of the workload is done before and after. Part of it is not just the actual initial design costs, but all of the responses to, uh, requests for information, change orders that come up in the construction process. So if the bond had been issued this month, they'd be getting the same, they'd just be getting more, a larger proportion of it out of the bond directly instead of out of my office's budget and then that being reimbursed.
You have any idea how much of what was appropriated before has been spent on, uh, legal fees and stuff?
Yeah, it's actually written down at the bottom of that. Um, $9,400 work release invoices, $30,700 legal fees, 25, $26,000 Baker Tilly being reimbursed or already reimbursed by Bottle Brush, $510 actual office expenses, $25,000 Baker Tilly cash flow analysis, $279,522 and $0.34 in courthouse costs. Architects, um, rowing, some work for rowing, uh, odds and ends like supplies and work that maintenance has started ordering and having done to prepare for moving documents out of the courthouse, document scanning, uh, getting Kyle Summers' building across the street set up for the clerk's office. The, the great bulk of it is architect, but there have been a lot of random things that have contributed to it as well. And I, I don't have the most recent invoice from the architects with me, but we have paid most of the anticipated cost for their services, um, barring any, like, adjustments that have to be made in the future. It just like I said, the way the timing falls, bond issuance hasn't occurred soon enough not to cover more out of this fund.
When do they think the bond will be issued?
I will know with more certainty later this week. Kevin and I have a call with the Barnes and Thornburg and Baker Tilly. Uh, but forthcoming, we're, we're expecting everyone will be out of the courthouse by middle September, and they'll start demol-, doing demolition by mid-September, early October.
What's the board's wish?
And like I said, if, if, you're only approving the advertising at this point, and if something changes between now and then with the timeline, you don't have to approve it, then you don't have to approve it. But if you don't approve advertising tonight, and next month, we're only then approving the advertising, it's two months from now before I've got that money and if I can't pay the bills, just going to delay the project when our consultants stop work until they are getting paid it.
All right, we have a motion to advertise the $200,000 for professional services. Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, where's that money come out of?
That'll come out of the Lit Economic Development Fund into my professional services line item. And then, just like we did for the Justice Center, once the bond is issued, I'll fill out a claim with about 57 invoices, tack to it, take it to the auditor's office, and Laura will transfer some of the funds from the new courthouse bond fund into the Lit Economic Development Fund to earn it all.
All my discussion I had.
Right. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? One. Then we have the additional for the sheriff of 20, $26,510 for building and structural repairs, uh, that was advertised last month. All right. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Okay, approve and sign the minutes of 5:8 2023 and 6:12 2023, regular meeting minutes. Everybody had an opportunity to see them? We'll entertain a motion to approve.
We'll make a motion to approve as presented.
We have a motion to approve as presented. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes. Uh, I put down the matrix of payroll discussion. I don't know if anybody has any other, any things that they want to bring up at this point in time or not?
I think we ought to not talk about the matrix or payroll this meeting and do it at our budget hearing. Be the first one I ever been to, we didn't talk about it.
Okay.
Oh, my gosh.
All right. Do I have to? And formally, aegis. Did we make a determination down the. Have been made.
I thought the.
Thank you.
Well, that was the meeting that I wasn't at. And I, and I asked that question. I was understood that everybody was putting 10% in. That was the maximum they were putting in. That was approved. I was.
Sounds good.
I thought. I thought you said, but it. Wage. Is wage steady? Aegis. But, and I can't, I prepare this budget and go to love after we.
Yeah. On this. One third. No, I actually, um, I wasn't, I wasn't, because I asked the commissioners to make a, a, uh, a commitment if they were going to at our joint session so we could have that conversation one last time. And I don't want to say, I, I don't want to say they've committed, but I feel, kind of the thought was that I proposed to them after doing. of the thought was that I proposed to them after doing some talk with, uh, what is going to be used out of the ARP funds, everything, what's been already promised and committed, that there will probably be enough money in the ARP fund to fund the, what I would call the wage increase, you know, the wage adjustment talking about. And then the cost of living increase that we give every employee, wouldn't be ten percent by no means then, probably three percent or something like that would, would come out of, uh, like we normally do, it would come out of our cash reserves.
Pretty much.
Right, yeah. Yeah, I guess whenever I was thinking about what she was asking for was for the, was for the cost of living, not so much for the whole, whole, whole ball of wax. But if, if we want that, I want it to start at the beginning of the year so that does make sense to me, that number now, so, so.
There's a lot of.
Yeah.
I get. A G. Actually. Also, got this matrix. Are many.
Oh. I mean, I, I know what I, what, what I'd like to do, what we discussed at the last meeting, talk with different members of the board about it and stuff and all. Yo, unfortunately, I don't know exactly what that number is. Especially putting it in there for each, each person, breaking it down for each person. I don't know that, I know that number. I don't know what the overall numbers are. I think.
Ken and I have talked about this a little bit, what I, 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 I think might be the only option for next year, because there's no way you can expect Laura, like, to overhaul the matrix, have everything and do the budget, is, it seems to me that for one year at least for twenty twenty-four, the matrix should just be demolished. And I say that because if you look at what the wage studies show, if you made the corrections, if you had, if we had the money right now to get everyone where we should be based on the regional average, very few, if any, positions would actually align with them. If you say we are going to give, like the number you have, one-third of the wage adjustment to everybody and then a three percent cost of living increase, you have a salary ordinance that doesn't necessarily follow a coherent matrix, but you've at least gotten wages up on the right path. And then you can spend the first half of next year actually working to figure out if you want the matrix restructured, replaced, a little of both, without trying to cram that all into the next four and a half months. You know, I, the, the wages, the regional averages, I've taken every one of those for existing positions, plugged them into a spreadsheet, I can tell you what my wage would be if I got a third of the correction plus two percent, three percent, four percent, five percent. I did that with a third correct, a third of the adjustment, a half, two-thirds. So literally, like, nine options for every single position based on what the council's pleasure is for next year. Aura would go from where she is at forty-two, six fourteen to one-third or one-half of the gap plus three percent. And then next year, like I said, you can start rebuilding the matrix or matrices based on where those regional averages are. You might say, okay, Deputy A, you're gonna get thirty-seven dollars a year more than the average says you should so that the matrix makes sense again, or we're gonna do something totally different. But instead of trying, figure out how to adjust pay and to overhaul the entire damn matrix, we now in budget approval, maybe you should just forget the matrix for twenty-four and have a salary ordinance based on whatever percentage cost of living increase and percentage wage adjustment you want to make for next year.
No, I, yeah, a hundred percent, yeah, Nathan.
It's just a question of what you want that percentage of the adjustment to be, what you want that COLA to be.
Or free.
Yep.
Hundred percent.
I think, I mean.
And it's giving.
Yeah.
Text on the budget here.
I mean.
Our sheriff's department isn't competing with Park County Sheriff's Department.
Yeah, and, and, and that's the reason, and I first thought it should be, I'll tell you, I, at first, I, my first inclination was to go by county sizes similar to ours, but I agree, and that was the, you know, conversations I've had with other business people and stuff and how they look at things and stuff, and, and that is, we're not competing, we're not competing with Southern Indiana, we're competing with Stark Marshall places around here. And, you know, at this point in time, they have other mechanisms in place that bring them in some other revenue, which, you know, we will most probably have the same, same thing coming here shortly, so I feel comfortable going this route myself. Ever, everybody on the board needs to feel comfortable, or at least enough people need to feel comfortable that we move forward with. I think this is just a good starting place and like Nathan said, and yeah, I didn't explain that well, yeah, yeah, it, it would, I mean, if we went this route, the matrix would be, be basically just a standard salary ordinance again, and then we would figure out, like I said, next year, that has to be our number one priority right away is to figure out what are we going to do when we get ready to do the next adjustment, hopefully that year is going to be a matrix, going to be, we're just going to go back to a salary ordinance once again.
A third, yeah, so if Johnny's salary this year is forty thousand dollars, Johnny's salary based on the regional average should be forty-five, then Johnny's salary next year would be.
Forty-two.
Forty-one, six. Plus. The cost of living. It could be a third, it could be a half, I've got the numbers for third, half, two-thirds. Well. But. And I'm not saying it has to, I'm not going to tell you you have to do the same percentage rate, you might do one-third for some departments, one-half for others.
So how about if I just do the regional, make the region?
Percent, they just put the whole thing out.
A whole region. Comes to budget.
Yeah, I'd, I'd say that would be the easiest way to start it now. Right, we, we need to just put it in right now at, at what the regional averages are for every position and. Yeah, I, yeah, I would put it in with it. Right, then we can lower it.
A five percent, three percent?
I say five percent myself, I think that's a reasonable.
Perfect.
All right, Laura, I will send that spreadsheet.
Any further discussion?
We could be down four, cut November.
Okay.
I don't know, maybe somebody works for us.
Well, like them guys, go ahead and do it. We'll see, if you get a bad letter, I don't know much better.
We'll get our guy, but he'll be on slow.
I'll watch him. The same way with the justice center. We could only lose so many people.
Then we get sued when something goes wrong in the jail. And that's much worse than paying payroll. Yes.
You will find numbers, Jared? Seven, seven jails I would down. Seven back to three, which I'll lose two more in two weeks, I've got to college, two dispatchers, and I've got four deputies, probably, you could do self-sustancial with a deputy. So we're coming into a critical phase here with self-asking of the deputy. And I just wanted to say the ten percent thing, maybe they discussed that several months ago, it was just, they were throwing out different numbers, and I didn't put that ten percent in my budget, mine was more than that. So you start throwing those things out.
Well, I think what we said, Sheriff, is, is they're going to put whatever Nathan's regional average was.
Yep, yep.
Then plus five percent, correct?
Yeah, that's a lot better than, than what I heard before, so I appreciate that and the way you've suggested, like Laura said, but fifty percent in there, you just can't go above that.
Right. And, and, and I guess maybe that's where the misconnect, anything that I put out here that I was talking about earlier was not for, was not, I wasn't looking at it as budget, I was looking at that, you know, just talking about a starting place, because so far, you know, irregardless of whether people like it or dislike it, I haven't seen any, any numbers or any, any proposal put on the table on how to get to someplace. But yeah, I've. I'd walk the sher, I'd walk that sheriff out of the doggone sheriff department. Yeah, I would. You don't come to my house and take my employees. All right, thank you. All right, uh, budget hearings are coming up. Hope everybody has their, their two days set aside, the seventh and eighth. Seventh, seventh and eighth of August, the budget hearings. Any board reports, anybody have anything from the board to discuss? Eight o'clock.
It has, so normally are.
Yeah, I. Uh, and that.
I wait to kill my.
I'm sorry, what? Oh, it's. All right. Anybody volunteering to settle on the ADA committee? Thank you, Brad, we appreciate it. Any public comment? All right, we'll adjourn our meeting, the next meeting, next commissioners' meeting is, uh, seven seventeen at eight-thirty, next council meeting is eight fourteen at seven PM, and the next joint session is eight fourteen at six PM. Don't forget the sign stuff.